Okay, we're live.
Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, November 16th, 2020. I had asked that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we asked, in this very troubled and plagued world with the coronavirus raging throughout the world, that a special blessing be showered upon the United States of America and all those countries of this planet, and that we may at last come to some solutions and vaccines that will help eliminate this from our lives. Many people have been troubled and are bothered, and it's causing major disruption of our lives, and we just ask that a special blessing be shown upon us at this time. Also tonight, we want to remember all those in our community who are under health issues at the moment, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them as they go about their hopefully their quick return to good health. Tonight, we also want to remember all those from our country who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon all these men and women from throughout the United States who go about defending our liberties. Tonight also, we want to just ask for vision and understanding and compassion as we act on the items of business before us, knowing that in our hearts and minds, each member of the council is here to do what they feel is in the best interest of Batavia and its future. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman, I can't see any of you at the moment. I'll just start the Pledge of Allegiance, and I ask that you all join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. Please be seated. That's the city clerk to please call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Here.
Knapp?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Wolf? Baron?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler? Meitzler? Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Saron? Saron? McFadden?
Yeah.
Well, I count the 11 present, three absent, but I think maybe two of those are actually here.
All right, well, we do have the necessary quorum to conduct business, and if the other missing ones are here, hopefully they will let us know at some point here near the beginning of the meeting that they've arrived. Moving then to item four on our agenda, which is my reminder to all of you to please speak into the microphone for BATV and for anybody out there that may be watching this on their computer. Moving then to item number five, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman, Chantet, do you have anything this evening?
No, all presenters are available tonight as well, so no changes.
All right. Okay, then moving to item number six, which is the presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chantet is Chairman of Governmental Services. Would you present this, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. The consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place and file the plan commission minutes for August 19th, 2020. Building reports for October 2020. Approvals: November 13th, 2020 payroll on the amount of $985,902.20. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $1,630,526. The September 2020 City Council financial report: Resolution 20-126-R, Authorization to Bind Insurance. Resolution 20-127-R, Authorizing Execution of Task Order Number 23 with Engineering Enterprises, Inc., with professional services, bidding, construction, engineering related to water treatment plant number one and number two rehabilitation. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second, Knapp.
Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Knapp, for the approval of the consent agenda as read. Any discussion presented? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Chantet? Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye, I was here for roll call as well.
Thank you. Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye, and I was here as well, broke off during roll call.
Gotcha. McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knapp?
Aye.
Thirteen, Your Honor.
Okay, we now have thirteen in the meeting, and so the vote was thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, moving to item number seven, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody signed up tonight or anybody out there?
We do not, Your Honor.
I might note Duke Wall, who sometimes comes to our meetings, met me in the lobby as I was coming in the building here a few minutes ago, and he said he wanted to come to the council and just say a thank you to all of you for some stuff that's happened recently, but he wanted to wait till he could potentially do this in person at a council meeting, so I think he'll be at a future meeting, but I just wanted to let you know that we did have one that was here, and obviously the council room is all dark, so. All right, no otherbody else from the public, so we will move to item number eight, which is always a nice evening of presentation by the Batavia Toy Drive people, tonight represented by Brittany Bailey. Brittany?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you all for letting us come down here and talk. I'm actually live right now from where we're hosting the toy drive this year. We have had our numbers growing. We've been collecting names from the clothes closet and food pantry for two weeks, and we already have over 75 families signed up. We will continue that sign up for two more weeks, but as you guys know, we never turn a family away in Batavia. We are here for the people of Batavia, so if somebody comes up after we've already sent the letters, we make sure that they have a Merry Christmas. A couple of things that are different this year with everything that's going on, we are only accepting new toys just based on not knowing where the things came from, so that's one change. We usually gently use things, but this year we are only accepting new. Our drop off places are the firehouses, Steve Hopkins Farmer Insurance, Drundle and Jansen, and then Hooverwood School, H.C. Storm, and Louise White. The police department, you can also drop off checks or gift cards or money there. We kind of prefer that it goes there so it doesn't get lost. My dad is retired now, kind of, so he's kind of our go around person for going to pick the different things up, so he'll go in and check in with all the different places. We're a little under a month from the day. Our big giveaway day will be December 13th. The way we have that planned right now is that our sign up sheets this year also looked a little bit different, so it not only had the child's age, but it also had some of their interests, so now we are personally shopping for them, so hopefully every kid will get something that they're looking for. The day of what we'll have is we'll have a number system, so whatever family it is, the first family that turn their thing in will be family number one, doesn't matter what their name is, and then as they pull up, we'll check them in, we'll call out their number, and then their stuff will be taken out to their car, so hopefully there is no contact with them at all, it'll just be putting the bags in their car. For those that don't know, normally at the shopping experience, where we have the mothers' club and the football team and a bunch of different people that come and help us, and they get to go shopping and pick out things for their kids. This year, we're doing the shopping and the bagging, and then we're just putting the stuff right in their car. They'll still get the same thing, so each child will get a big toy, a small toy, a hat, gloves, a book, puzzle game, a couple of stocking stuffers, and that's the norm of what they would get, so that's not changing, it's just the manner in which they're getting it. Our biggest needs are always six to 12, especially boys, it seems this year, hats and gloves in our teenagers, which if you have a teenager, you know they're impossible to shop for to begin with, so teens are always our hardest category. So thank you again for all you guys do to support us and the town, and we really appreciate it.
Well, Brittany, number one, I want to thank you and your family and the Dubises and all those who joined with you in doing this. I just want to also, as mayor, encourage anybody that's listening out there that if they haven't made a donation and they'd like to, that we certainly would welcome that. That will go a long way toward helping you succeed in your business. I've had a couple of people call me and ask about that, so I think there will be some checks in the mail very soon. It will be dropping at the police department or whatever, so that's good news.
Fantastic.
I guess the only question I have after your report is, when it comes time to carry all this stuff out of the building, do we have some football players ready to help us, or how are we doing this?
Um, we're not 100% sure on how we're going to do it. Right now, I have my 13-year-old, I got my husband, I got my brother, so hopefully it'll all work out. It always does, you know, looking to it, we're always worried, are we going to make it? Is it going to happen? And somehow, you know, Batavia blessing, call it whatever you want to, but it always comes through. We always have enough toys, and it always works out.
Well, I'm going to keep that on the front burner here with you and your dad, and we'll hopefully, if things get tight here, by the 13th, I can probably find some volunteers in the community who will come over there with muscle on their backs or on their arms and help us carry some stuff out, because that is, some of those packages, as you well know, can get to be pretty heavy, and so it would be, you know, one of our real great supports has been the Batavia Football Program, when they bring the boys over there and they can pick that stuff up with seeming little problem and get it out to the car, and so hopefully we can find that type of interest in the community. And so, again, you know, I thank you and your family and everybody involved for doing this. This is, I believe, the 70th year we've done this now since 1940 or 1950, I think it was, and so we've been, and we've never missed a year in doing this. Now, this year, we had to miss the fireworks program, which was the other thing that was started by the late Fire Chief Bud Richter. He started both these activities in the same year, and the fireworks, we had to shut down this year, obviously, for the Corona thing, so this one will not be stopped by Corona, though, and so I think of all the years that your grandmother helped kind of orchestrate this program, and I got to believe she's got a big smile across her face in the heavens above as she sees what's going on here today and how the third generation of her family has stepped into this thing, and thank you for all that you and the Baileys and all the everybody else does, because this really is a very special moment in Batavia and a very special moment in Northern Illinois, because there aren't many other places that do this. So thank you for all you do. May you be blessed for always for all the great work that is given by this and all the happiness it's brought on December 25th to a lot of places that may not be as happy had we not been able to put this together. So thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, the next thing I guess we got is the administrator, no. We've done the resolution, no, we haven't done Main Street, I'm sorry. Now you moved the agenda back for me, I can see what I'm doing. All right, item nine is the Main Street Minute, and we're very honored to have Beth Walker, the Executive Director, here with us, so Beth, we're going to turn this over to you.
All right, thank you. Well, at Main Street right now, we're just working to help the businesses as much as we can. Right now, we're working on getting our online directory up and running, which would be an easy access point for everybody to go to the individual websites of all the businesses. We are hosting a How to Shop Safely webinar tomorrow with the Chamber, which will, we have a web designer who's going to go through some key things for e-commerce for our merchants, including, you know, if they decide to do private shopping schedules, how to amp up their e-commerce for the holidays, and then we have a panel of Annie from Hearth and Hammer, she's been really successful online, as well as Casey from Six Plus Cypress, so we're excited to get that done. You know, and then we have the Home for the Holiday Shopping Promotion. It was going to be on just the Small Business Weekend after Thanksgiving, but we're considering extending that just to continue to push for more shopping local. So we're going to finalize the dates on that, but it looks like we're probably going to have it run through December 18th, which, you know, if you spend $20 or more at 10 different businesses, you can enter to win a Prepare Your House for the Holidays prize package. It's valued at over $3,500, and it includes things like a new hot water heater, a free paint, room painting, a carpet cleaning, an area rug, so it's a pretty good price package. That's what we've got going on.
All right, any questions of Beth? Okay, well, thank you for your good report. Thanks, Batavia Main Street, for your great job of kind of bringing this all together, and we've got a lot of new businesses in downtown Batavia that I think are certainly great to have, and this is a great support system for them through Main Street and the Chamber, that the business coordination and cooperation it's shown, and sharing of advertising and word of mouth. Hopefully, we're on the right track here to do some neat things in Batavia in the days ahead, so thank you for your leadership in that regard.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to 10, which is a motion for waiving formal bidding to award copier contract to Gordon Flesch. Somebody wants to talk about this one?
Your Honor, I have it.
I didn't get it. Somebody started saying, I apologize, somebody, I got in the way of somebody there.
Your Honor, I have it for Government Services.
Okay, go ahead.
Sure, so we do have to waive formal bidding for this. This is Resolution 20-119-R to award a contract to a local firm, Gordon Flesch, for new copiers. As we learned in committee, we have an aging fleet of copiers, many of them almost 10 years old, and we know that with advances in technology, our staff can certainly take advantage of increased reliability and lowered maintenance costs. So we've had great service from this firm before, and if there's no additional discussion on this, I would move that we approve, I'm sorry, I would move that we first waive the formal bidding for authorization of this contract.
Second, Malley.
Okay, moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Malley to waive formal bidding on the Gordon Flesch copier contract. Any discussion on the motion to waive formal bidding? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Chantet? Chantet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knapp?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 13 yes, no, no's, one absent. Motion's approved.
And then I would move that we approve Resolution 20-129-R to approve our copier refresh with Gordon Flesch for an amount not to exceed $82,963.75.
Second, Malley.
Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Malley for the approval of Resolution 20-129-R, approver of the copier refresh contract. Any discussion on that? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Chantet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knapp?
Aye.
Motion's approved by a vote of 13 yes, no, no's, one absent. All right, moving then to 12, which is the Administrator's Report. Laura? You're not, you're not talking.
Thank you, sorry about that. I wanted to start off today by acknowledging a couple of our local businesses who have been recognized lately. Hearth and Hammer was recognized by the Chicago Board of Tourism for, along with 30 other small businesses, for their Illinois Made program, and they were also written up in Chicago Magazine, along with a number of other local artisan type of retailers out here in this area. And I don't know if people caught that there was some commercials that were put together by State of Illinois about adherence to COVID matters and the impact on local businesses, and Beardsguard was one of the businesses that was featured in that story, so some Batavia businesses getting some recognition. Also wanted to alert you that the tax levy ordinances for the 2020 collection and 2021 are going to be on the agenda tomorrow night. There is no rate increase that is planned for the 2020 levy. Last week, unfortunately, we had an incident of employee testing positive for COVID in our community development department, and so it is closed to the public until November 24th. Some staff are working remotely, and there are a couple of staff who are in the office, but at this point, we're going to keep that public counter closed to keep everyone safe. We do have boxes here at City Hall where you can, where you can submit any applications that you need to or pick up permits, if that is the case, and then we encourage people to use the online permitting process that is available on the community development page of our website, and then also anyone in the department is available via phone. If they are not at their desk, voicemails will be returned promptly so that we can continue to conduct the important business of that department. In Public Works, final asphalt surface has been placed for the Area 3 sewer separation project that's finally coming to a close. The final landscape restoration remains to be completed. The Schedule 4 landscaping is weather depending and may not be completed until spring. Electric crews have become the annual work on installation of the holiday greenery throughout our downtown. In these highly unusual times, it's really reassuring to see something that has been a longtime tradition here in the city of Batavia, and it really looks exceptional. There may be some delay in installing of the trees and baskets along Batavia Avenue between Main and First because of the construction that's going on in that area. Construction documents have been issued for the improvements to the water treatment facility. That project is expected to commence construction as early as possible in 2021 and will continue throughout the entire year. And bids have been received for reconstruction of the Paramount Substation, and contracts will be presented to council for approval in December. And that's all I have, unless anyone has any questions for me.
Any questions, Laura?
Laura, I have two questions for you.
Sure, Alderman Beck.
The first one is if the Batavia Reconnected Committee was going to reconnect about winter, any winter projects or proposals for the remaining, well, if there's any remaining, whatever, no, there's definitely a remaining budget in that grant that we were using for the PPP stuff and whatnot.
Yes, there is still money remaining in that grant project, around $50,000, if I, if memory serves correctly. We did not have any plans to meet regarding the use of those funds for a winter program, but certainly, you know, Margaret and Beth and I talked numerous times throughout the week, so if there is a need, I know that we had talked about maybe sending out a survey to businesses to see what they need. Frankly, I'll just be honest here, I think what they need is money. And right now, I do know that the county in their program where they were going to be granting $8 million, only received $2.25 million in applications, and so at the last county board meeting, they did agree that they wanted to roll out additional grants, do another round. However, I've checked their site daily, and it still nothing is posted for a program in that regard, but certainly the opportunity for businesses to receive grants of $10,000 a piece and $20,000 a piece, depending on when that business was first incorporated, I think that's really going to be helpful to our small business community.
Awesome. My second question was following up from the conversation we had last spring about the Parklet Ordinance, and then specifically Limestone's request for a bike rack. Any opinion on that?
So with regard to the bike rack being in the parking spaces, we could do that, we would just need to have that positive protection for, to prevent vehicles from, because if people were taking their bikes out of that bike rack, we wouldn't want there to be any conflict between cars, and so we can get a price quotation on what something like that would look like. And now is a good time of year to talk about the Parklet Ordinance, so I could bring that to City Council sometime in December or January, so that once the weather is nice outside again, because those programs typically run from May through the end of October, so that the whatever is installed can then be removed for snow clearing purposes in the wintertime.
Wonderful, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions of the city administrator? Or have, did you hear today of any updates on timing on work on Main Street as far as when we're going to get maybe that open and more open than it is right now?
Well, right now, we are trying to get down as much of that binder course as possible. That is our number one priority as well, and that is from Water Street to Jackson Street, I believe, and Gary is on the line, and perhaps he can chime in as well. And then we are moving to the other side of South Batavia Avenue within the hopes that we can open up four lanes of traffic, but at least three lanes of traffic for the wintertime. Gary, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Our goal is to get west all the way to Van Norwick if we can. So we want to open up Main Street to traffic. The asphalt plants closed, Mayor, prior to Thanksgiving, that those days, that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, prior to Thanksgiving, so by then, if the asphalt is not down, it's not going to be down, because the asphalt plants will be closed.
That's the reason I asked the question, because I've had several people ask me about it, and I just wanted to know what, you know, I know you've been working feverishly about it, I have no criticism about that, I just wanted to know where you thought we were at the schedule. I'm thinking that the good weather, it sounds like we should have for the rest of this week, at least not too much rain or snow or anything, may help us a little bit, won't it?
Yes, very much so. In fact, we notified the residents in the area that some of the concrete work, so things like sidewalks and even some driveway aprons, that concrete work is being delayed, because right now, the critical path item is the asphalt, because the asphalt path will be, asphalt path, can't say that, the asphalt plants will be closing, so we need to get the asphalt down first, then we're going to drop back and do some of the extra concrete work.
And we think we're going to have enough asphalt on South Batavia Avenue from First down to Elm by, you know, the Thanksgiving weekend?
Yeah, we need to get at least, our goal is to get at least three lanes open with that Far East northbound lane, the one, the lane where traffic is traveling, and now that lane possibly remaining closed during the wintertime, but ideally, if we could get that lane resurfaced, then we can get all four lanes open for the wintertime.
Okay.
Hey, Gary, could I ask him a question, Mayor?
Go ahead. Sure, go ahead.
Hey, Gary, is there any chance that the asphalt contractor is talking with the plants that they could possibly stay open later with, because the weather seems to be agreeable? And I know last year I was doing a lot of paving and they, they didn't close the plants till mid, like, third weekend, but in December.
Yeah, this year is strikingly different. There is a resounding lack of construction projects this year. They, they, they have not had really enough, the only, one of the big reasons they're going to stay our project. But we're like literally one of the only big projects left out there.
Okay, so it's good to give it a shot.
Yeah. Now Geneva's, Geneva's kind of been just kind of idling and, and standing by waiting because they don't have a lot of other work right now.
I just want to say that, number one, I really appreciate the dialogue that we've had here tonight because this is, you know, some of the looming questions about the community out there. And I'm glad that, you know, we've got a staff that's on top of it and knows what's going on and that we are going to try our best to get as much open as we possibly can before we get hit by bad weather. And I eagerly watch the weather report every night now, given what I learned down here at City Hall each day about, you know, how much longer we're going to have. Because you may remember, we had last year, we had the Fabian Bridge shut down for the wintertime because we couldn't get the, start pouring there. And that was an extended situation. And I certainly would not like to see us not try to get ourselves into that situation on Batavia Avenue. I was kind of put into perspective here that some of the things have already been said. I was at the library the other day and these three ladies pull in and, and they roll down the window. They didn't know who I was, but they said they were looking for the Hearth and Hammer shop in Batavia and they couldn't find it. It was addressed, I believe, on maybe Batavia Avenue or Main Street. And they, they couldn't, I said, well, you got to go up to the alley and go behind there and you'll find it. So then when I just happened to become back out of the library, when they were coming back down First Street and they rolled down their window and they said, thank you for directing us. It was well worth the stop. So, you know, it's, it's good that we've got, you know, great communications out there in the community and we know where good things are and what needs to, how you can get there and that we can open things back up. But I'm sensitive to those businesses down there on Batavia Avenue from First Street specifically down to, well, including the Funeral Home at Main because they have been under a tremendous amount of stress this year, given the construction. And you know, as I have explained to a number of people, we were dealing with some old, old water lines and sewer lines and the road buried down there that had been there well over a hundred years. And we had to replace a bunch of stuff. And this was no small task. And so we got a lot of things done this year, but it, it stretched itself out and hopefully we'll get, at least week by, so we can get things open for the holiday season and get the corridor kind of opened up there so that people have front, front door access to some of those businesses on South Batavia Avenue. And we get it ready for next year when hopefully we get some more new businesses joining those already down there. So we're very excited about what's happening in downtown Batavia. It's got a lot of moving parts to it at the moment. And the council is going to have some interesting discussions, I think, after the first of the year about, you know, what streets are we going to close for next year and what we're going to allow for tables to be set up. And we're probably going to have some more restaurants knocking on the doors, wanting, I'm, at least I'm talking to some that tell me they're wanting to come in. So we're getting to be kind of a downtown of restaurants, which is not all bad because my friends out at Fermilab tell me that all these people who are coming in there to do research under the new accelerator that's now being built, they all like to come into downtown Batavia and eat because there's such a variety of menu selections of ethnic foods that are offered. So that's another great thing that I think we've got going for us. So just some positive things that we want to talk about. Okay, let's go to committee reports. Government Services, Alderman Chansett, do you have anything?
Your Honor, tomorrow night, you're going to be discussing the budget over this series of tax levies. We're also going to be setting a tax rate for municipal cannabis.
Okay, anything else?
We did push off the discussion regarding Strategic Action Plan because we had such a full Cal meeting last week, so we'll be discussing that as well.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, Community Development, Alderman Callahan?
Nothing for tomorrow night.
Okay, Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Nothing for tomorrow night, Your Honor.
And City Services in the absence of Alderman Wolf, does anybody else have anything to say on that one?
Yeah, Alderman Rosado here, and there's nothing on for tomorrow night.
Okay. All right, let's move to other business. Fourteen, does anybody on the council have any other business they want to bring up?
I do.
Go ahead.
Ms. Alderman Saron, I, I just wanted to bring up, kind of give everyone a heads up. A couple of residents came to me with a an idea to help promote Batavia restaurants during the, this crisis. And we've created kind of a promotion called, tentatively called, We Side With Batavia Restaurants. And we, in conjunction with the Chamber and Main Street and the PTO, we're going to be promoting takeout orders to Batavia restaurants and create kind of a friendly competition between the east side and the west side to see who can order more food from, from specific restaurants. Each week, we will highlight specific restaurants and ask either the, both the east side and west side to order from those restaurants and we'll tally and see who can, who can be bigger supporters. So I'm going to be reaching out to all of you on the council to help promote and reach out to your residents and constituents to, to help save our restaurants as they're struggling here. And this should kick off, you'll see things start to kick off next week on Facebook and and in the internet and whatnot. And we're looking at probably the first weekend in December to start this promotion. But heads up and I will, I will be in contact with all of you.
Anybody else? Thank you for that report.
Your Honor, Dan?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to, I mentioned that I, I believe this was the first time I haven't heard Alderman Brown, because he was not here, because he's not on council any longer, to remark about the toy drive. Every year, I recall him for the last several years extolling how important it was to make a cash donation or a gift card donation for those difficult to buy for teenagers and that the community can trust in the organization because every penny that is donated, that's received by the Police Department does absolutely go to the organization. So he was not here tonight to, to say that. And so I definitely wanted to throw that in. Also, I guess I, in my previous years when I was able to, I made a contribution to the toy drive. I really did enjoy going shopping. In previous years, I have committed one month stipend from City Council to that. And I would challenge anyone on City Council who is in a position to make that similar contribution to assist with the toy drive this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, very quickly, under the mayor's report, item fifteen, I just want to advise you because you may see this. This afternoon, I guess it was, I participated in the making of what I guess is being described as some kind of a public service announcement that is going to include the mayors of Batavia, Geneva, St. Charles, South Elgin and Elgin. And we met as a group last week with our city administrators and expressed our concerns about, you know, what was happening in each one of our towns as it revolved around the whole Corona situation. And so I had the opportunity to be part of, as did Mayor Burns from Geneva, as because of our roles in the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning and the Chicago Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, we had the opportunity to be part of a six mayor group that met with the governor a week ago Wednesday, in which we shared some ideas with him about things that we could do to kind of want the, kind of the impacts that specifically the coronavirus and the closings is having on the restaurant industry. And one of the things that we advocated in that conversation was that number one, that if we allow the restaurants to reopen, that we, number one, request that they all give a temperature check to everybody that walks in the door. And secondly, we require everybody wear a mask and have the mask on as long as they're, except maybe when they're eating or taking a drink, but they keep it under their chin so they can pull it up when they're just sitting there at the table talking. And then secondly, we request that we, everybody try to maintain some type of social distancing factor. And then the idea that we offered up that I think has some value, and the governor seemed to think it, maybe it was something that it could be introduced, was that we ask every bar and restaurant that when somebody comes in the door, you present them with a card. And on that card, they write their name, their email address and their telephone number. And they also put there at what time they came into this restaurant or bar. And therefore, if anybody in the days beyond this calls up and says, well, I got Corona and I was in your restaurant, or I was in your bar or whatever. Right now, we are told one of the big problems that the health departments are having is trying to chase down all these social distancing calls that they're getting about where somebody got it and who was near them and whatever have you. And as you can see, what we're proposing to do here, specifically in bars and restaurants, is create a record of who was there, who you were sitting with and what time you were there so that if something happens, the restaurant can just give that information right away to the Health Department. And it's going to cut down significantly on the time that's being spent trying to chase all this stuff down. And so we offered those up and I think that was well received. I like to think it was. And we'll see if the state does anything with it. But then other mayors in the Chicagoland region who I deal with in my role as chairman of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Plannings, council of mayors downtown are telling me that some of the rest of them have also attempted to adopt similar types of ideas. And so there's a lot of flowing around because this, this restriction specifically on the restaurant world has been very dismayed, great dismay to most of the mayors and the cities. And needless to say, I think we're all hearing from our constituents their, their reservations about why we can't have restaurants and socialization and friendship and whatever have you. And we are really seriously, I think, acknowledging at long last, how serious this really is and that we need to employ some, some issues to try to bring Corona under control once and for all. And maybe some of the serums and repairs for, you know, things that can be done to your human body that maybe in the offing here in the near future may go some distance and bringing some of that under control further. But it's been a, been a long and troubling task this year. And as many people say, 2020 is the year never, never to be repeated. One thing I would like to say in that regard to the members of the council, as you know, we have been able to acquire a large inventory of face masks. And they're like, the one I'm wearing, this one right now is the kind we have. And we have them in sealed packages at City Hall. And I would just invite every member of the council or anybody that's listening or whatever, if you need some or know somebody that could use some masks, please contact us and we'll give them, you, there's no charge. We will give them to you and you can distribute them. I have, I have reached out myself in the last couple of weeks and I've contacted, I believe, almost every church in Batavia and asked if they would like to have some. And almost everyone has taken some. Some have called back and asked for further additional replenishments. And then I've been to places like the Elder Day Senior Center up at the old McQuain School on West Wilson Street. I've been over to Valley Shelter Workshop on Main Street and we've, we've supplied all those folks with masks. And we've been to a number of the senior living communities in town. So we're trying to get these out and get them going and that we will get Batavia really as a masked up city. So again, as an alderman, if you know somebody in your board or you know somebody in any place in town that could use a couple of packages of masks, I believe there's ten masks in every package that we have. And so we've got them here and we can give them to you. And please feel free to call upon us to do that. So that's the end of my report for tonight. I guess at this time then, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by, are you, two of you, or two, or two, or three of you spoke at the same time? I'm going to say, did I hear Alderman O'Brien say in there?
Yes, you did.
Okay. And then it's Alderman Chansett, maybe? I don't know.
Malley.
Malley, okay. Moved and seconded that we adjourn. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting stands adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.